Have to amend the agenda then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just this is strongly there.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. Okay, do you just want to give it to Denise? It's not, it's not a substantive.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00 PM. Second please call roll.
Chairman Sobolski?
Here.
Commissioner Barbarina?
Here.
Gail Greger here. Treasurer Dorsevitz?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here.
Commissioner Berry is excused. And Commissioner Itzel?
Here.
Thank you. And we have the approval of this evening's agenda. There are a couple of changes. I would like to move the approval of the minutes item toward the end of our meeting. And we've received a request to, an application 2488. They would like to withdraw their application at this time. So with those changes, is there approval of the amended agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Your support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barbarina and supported by Commissioner Boyd to approve amended agenda for tonight. All in favor signify by saying.
You're saying, can you speak up? We can't hear you.
Sorry. So we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're at public comments, is there any?
Actually, I said minutes, not agenda.
Oh, did I say minute? Oh, I'm sorry, agenda. Next is public comments. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to any non-agenda item? If so, you come up to the podium. You have three minutes. Give us your name and address if you so desire, at least your community.
Hey Dennis, I'm gonna go over five or three minutes. I wrote this down so I'd be efficient, but it's still like five and a half minutes. So when I get, I know, when I get to three.
Right, you know, we had a comment here, you know very well, that they didn't like it, that I went over three minutes. So I'm very sticking close to three minutes.
That's fine. What I was gonna say is that I'm very happy to come back after anyone else has comments to finish it.
Uh huh.
Because I'm actually doing this for you guys.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Now I'm gonna read fast, bear with me if you have questions later on, I'll stick around. My name is Bill Pine, I've lived here for 45 years. On June 1st, I plan to talk to you about your being set up as sacrificial anodes, which I learned about in my naval architecture class at the Naval Academy. Sacrificial anode is a piece of metal on a ship designed to be destroyed to protect something else. In this case, the township board. On June 1st, I initially heard you talk about having a traffic study and about laws protecting us from casinos. I didn't do my piece on sacrificial anodes because it sounded like you guys were being responsible. I was sold until I heard someone say that laws can be changed. Someone else talked about traffic study and left growing concerns in my mind about what it actually was. A week after you guys approved the racetrack PUD, the Northville Downs guys stated in Hometown Life that they had been trying to change laws for 25 years, were still trying to do so. Three weeks later, four separate bills were introduced into the Michigan State Senate Natural Resources and Agriculture Committee to change gaming and horse racing laws. Giving you the benefit of the doubt, I think we've all been misled on casinos and laws. Traffic, turning to traffic, because I was uncomfortable with what I read. I actually found and read the traffic study and I was flabbergasted at what I saw. I talked to the township board about it last Tuesday and I wanted to share what I found with you. I started my discussion with the old joke about the boss asking three people about what one plus one was. First was a church choir director and they sang a couple of verses. Second was an MBA, they had three charts and eight spears. The third was a consultant. They asked the boss what they wanted one plus one to be. When I did this, later trustee Kirmy asked whose traffic study it was, who paid for the traffic study? The consultant was paid by Northville Downs. I asked the board, how many of them had read the consultant's study? And the answer was none. So they were thinking about what was in it. I told them there was a little Northville data from 2020. There was a little MDOT data from 2017. There was zero current information. There was zero Plymouth Township information. I asked, I'm sorry, they did not know the study included nothing on the underlying capabilities of Ridge and Five. This was an issue of some concern when the landfill legal discussion took place several years ago, as noted by Supervisor Heisey in quotes on the Rock. The problem has only gotten worse. They did not know that it includes nothing about the massive new automotive warehouse that's going across the street from experience, and that there's gonna be heavy, heavy duty tractor trailer and medium duty straight truck business in and out. They, does not include anything about the Meyer facility that you guys all stood up for. And I give you kudos for that. It sounds like it's coming back though, there's nothing in there about that. There was nothing about the new Ivywood K through 12 charter school that's going in just down the road, which has potential for significant traffic. The folks for the racetrack have talked about soccer, pickleball, music performance fireworks, and other community activities being pursued at the proposed racetrack. The traffic study includes nothing about those. And for anyone who's been around for 10 years, you know how bad that is. Is that three? Is that three?
Yeah.
Can you stop?
If you would, thank you, thank you very much.
Fast after Enbrolus.
Okay. Is there anyone else?
Now I'm short, should I leave it like this? Can you hear me now? I don't know how to use this.
We can, sure.
I'm a lot shorter than most people. It's working? I start now. Good evening, I'm Mary Pine, resident since 1978. With regards to the proposed Northville Downs site in Plymouth Township, I had asked the younger Carlo brother why they did not build Northville Downs in their own community. He told me that Northville Township turned them down. I later attended the 6-1 planning meeting and stated that Northville Township rejected the request for Northville Downs to be in Northville Township without quoting the 223 The Rock, which confirms this. Clearly, if they were told no, they would not apply to move their business to Northville Township. Of the questions asked to John Carlo in the 6-1 meeting, three stand out. He was asked if he applied to move his business to Northville Township. He said there was never any conversation. Two, he was asked if he ever owned property, property in Northville Township or applied for a PUD. He stated no. Three, he asked if, so to speak, he was kicked out of town. He stated that he leased from an individual and it was decided to be put on the market to sell. If due diligence had been done, different questions should have been asked. The Detroit Free Press, for 17, 18 states, Hunter Pasture Homes, said it was buying Northville Downs from the Northville Driving Club and the Carlo Family Partnership. The tentative deal shows a total sale price of 10.25 million, with a representative for the firm disputing that figure. Digging deeper, the 2020 Michigan Licensing and Regulatory Affairs reports that Northville Driving Club Corporation is a commercial real estate rental of horse facilities and other real estate investments. John Carlo is a director. Meaningful questions were not asked. Transparency has not been present. Infuscation has. To protect your own reputation and that of Plymouth Township as a family community, a better job of due diligence and transparency was needed. A vote was taken with no confirmed knowledge of what the community benefits are. Not knowing the trade-off is irresponsible. Is any trade-off worth associating Plymouth Township with a gambling facility with a bar? The community does not want to see Northville Township, Plymouth Township on a billboard. Northville Downs of Plymouth Township on a billboard. This is not what our community stands for, gambling with a bar attached. We chose this community for so much more. This is said to protect your own reputations and standing in Plymouth Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, may I distribute one of these to the board? This is an article in the Detroit Free Press.
Can you give us your name for the record? No, can you give us your name for the minutes?
My name is Ron Hoag, I live on Glenview Drive in Plymouth Township. This is an article about what happened in Huron Township back in 2007, 8, 6, 7, 8. They had a racetrack proposal, they planned on turning it into a good entertainment venue. And what happened as a result of that, it lasted about two years and then failed. So in Huron Township, the planning commission and the Board of Trustees, along with Wayne County, participated in funding about $35 million worth of roads and water and sewer. Then the racetrack failed and they closed down. Huron Township, for example, was left, Wayne County was left with a huge debt, they had to fail. Huron Township was left with a debt as well. That today, they're still paying off. In 2008, they're paying that for another 10 years because of the failure of their commissions and the Board of Trustees and Wayne County adequately vetted the people that were proposing this business. So I propose to you that the Northville Downs, Plymouth Township, the same thing is about to happen, unfortunately. But this is, history is potent for the future. And that's what happened.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Okay. Yes. Sure.
Hmm. I only have the... What's that?
It's got the Plymouth Township header.
Oh, that wasn't, sorry about that. Okay. This is a memorandum from the Charter Township of Plymouth, Michigan. Dear Planning Commissioners, Since July 11th, 2023, the Planning Department received a total of 158 emails, comments regarding PC 2478, the Northville Downs of Plymouth PUD site plan. Only one of these was a unique comment. Quote, "I strongly encourage you to end the racetrack venture. This report on harness racing cruelty attached to the email just has been filed. You don't want this in Plymouth Township," unquote. Received July 16th, 2023. 157 were comments sent using a People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, or PETA, auto-generated form letter. This form letter is identical to the one received previously in February of 2023 during the PUD option stage of the review. The PETA form comments read as follows. Quote, "Message to the Planning Commission. As a Michigander, I'm writing to request that you deny the proposal for a new horse racing facility in Plymouth Township. Horses used for harness racing are whipped and administered an array of painkillers, anti-inflammatory drugs, and performance-enhancing hormones to keep them racing. When they're injured, illegal drugging such as milkshaking with sodium bicarbonate is common. All this leads to catastrophic injuries and death. In 2020, 31 trainers and veterinarians, many involved in harness racing, were indicted for taking part in illicit doping scheme uncovered by the FBI. The cases are being adjudicated now and several people are already serving prison sentences. We should not allow an industry synonymous with illegal doping, horse deaths, and slaughter to operate in our state. Please vote no on the recent proposal for a new horse racing facility."
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next item.
You really need to hear the rest of that.
When does it get to finish?
Okay, you get an additional three minutes.
The, some of the words were in the study. The study is assumptions based on estimates, based on prognostications. It's a make-believe study. You guys approved the PUD based on a make-believe study. As Benjamin Disraeli famously said, "There's lies, damn lies, in statistics." You know, professionally, I would never make any decision based on that stuff. You need to know about what happened at the board meeting last Tuesday. About 75, in my guess, and I've been offered it, about 75 people showed up. There was one guy from Canton Township who was for it because he wanted a job at the racetrack. There were 74 people from Plymouth Township who were all against it, strongly against it. The, there were hundreds of other people who wanted to come but couldn't come on short notice. There are more than 10,000 people who know about this now because of social media. Not all of them are from Plymouth Township, most of them are. Plymouth Township is strongly against this. The people who are for this are generally people, there are some from Plymouth Township, but they're generally people from outside of Plymouth Township who have connections to gambling and horse racing. The thing that was interesting is during this process, when Supervisor Heisey realized how many people were against it, he blamed this on you, that's why I'm here. He said, I think at least four times, that this was strongly recommended, unanimously recommended to the board by the Planning Commission, on two occasions. So I'm back here to tell you that you are sacrificial anodes. And I'll pardon my crudity, but from my naval academy days, I used to call that being a shit shield. Congratulations, you guys are now officially sacrificial anodes. The reason I'm here, genuinely, is to watch out for you. And I would ask that in return, you watch out for the folks in Plymouth Township. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next is the text amendment to zoning ordinance number 99 on solar energy systems. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, okay?
Is it okay if I present as well?
Pardon me?
I'm gonna present my computer as well, is that all right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. While we're waiting for that, good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Eric Gearlings. I'm a member of the Plymouth Township Environmental Leadership Commission. I forgot my badge, but it's in the car. And I'm here on behalf of that commission. And I do live in Plymouth Township in Glenview, HOA, near North Territorial and Beck. A couple months back, I did present five minutes of prepared remarks regarding this for the MITC. And so for those that were in the room then, it's gonna be same thing. But I wanted to make sure that the thoughts of the Environmental Leadership Commission were shared with you prior to diving right into the text and hopefully answering any questions you guys may have. Looks like it's all set up, thank you. All right. So, all the appointed members of the ELC appreciate that we're being given the chance to engage directly with the Planning Commission, and I am honored to represent them. This evening, I will share about five to 10 minutes of prepared slides and remarks. And afterward, I will do my best to answer any more detailed questions regarding the proposed text ordinance. First, a brief bit about myself, I'm the lead author. I do claim to be, I guess, a technology nerd since the days of VHS and VCRs, floppy disks, style of internet. We've all seen a lot of change over the decades, and I've certainly witnessed plenty myself. My wife and I have solar panels on our roof, a dozen panels. You'll see here on the screenshot on the right, that on a particular day last March 2022, we had 18.6 kilowatt hours produced. That's green light, so midday, obviously peak sun. In the evening, turning on the other end, that kind of thing, get more demand. I just wanted to show for those that don't own a solar system, just how much power, when you're not running AC, you can handle with just solar. On a professional level, I do work in Plymouth Township as well. I'm on my road, work for Metro Consulting Associates. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Michigan, Wisconsin, and Texas. And I spent about seven years in the energy sector and about six years working for municipalities. Graduated from Calum College, Maryland University, Brown House, Michigan. And I have a master's in business from a school down in Houston where I lived for six years. I've had a couple of articles, speaking engagements, but more importantly, the projects I'm looking at right now include two utility scale 100-plus megawatt solar farm projects in Michigan, two 100-megawatt battery and two storage projects in Michigan. Just received as a subconsultant for Polaris, a grant to install EV chargers in the UP, four of them in our network for off-road EVs. And working on a wind farm project, have also worked on different solar ordinance for a DMS panel in hand-in-hand with the Department of Energy and Enbrol. And also working on an electric shuttle bus charging site with Michigan Twin Cities. So, background, why adopt a solar ordinance? There we just, these six bullets, we'll cover these in a little bit more detail, but very briefly. Summer is deep electricity demand. Second, low cost and manufactured regionally, that is, speaking of the solar industry. We currently have worse air quality in most of the state. I'm not talking about the fires in smoke from Canada, I'm talking about air quality generally. Solar does complement the electrified mobility trend and battery sector, which is big in Southeast Michigan for our hearing. Fifth, township and MITC seek to attract companies who want solar. Township is currently not equipped to review or approve all types of solar projects. This figure here on this first slide is admittedly quite busy. However, in the red box, I called out, this is data from MISO. They are the entity that oversees the transmission grid before utilities, public utilities such as DTE or Constance. MISO operates the mid-content independent system they had operating. This is their data, so Michigan is just a small portion of this. We can clearly see that the demand during summer is merely double what it is in fall. And that's because when we're all running our air conditioners, the demand is significantly higher in the sunny, hot afternoon. And cooling hours when people go home, turn on the lights, like this. Next slide, cost electricity from solar power has fallen significantly. At the top of the graph, it's very small. That here in orange on the line, it's dropping. That's 2010 to 2018 at the bottom of the graph, so this is a little bit outdated. It has surpassed offshore wind, nuclear energy, coal, it's on carbon onshore wind. Pointing that's not showing, there is natural gas. There are plenty of solar industry jobs in the power manufacturers in the USA, 255,000 in fact, which is five times more than the coal industry. And regional manufacturers really have flooded in the cap for Michigan, Hemlock Semiconductor. They are one of the best at making components that go into many things, including solar, that's what they're speaking on. First, Lake Erie's Blue Island and others in nearby states. Third factor, air quality, Wayne County is one of the heat in the state that does not meet ETS clean standards. Clean air standards for ozone. The figure on the right is from the, from the UK, and that is the production of ozone comes from heat, sunlight, you can't imagine about those. But volatile organic compounds and excess oxidates decompose when our tailpipes are internal combustion engines. Therefore, highly populated areas, various coal plants are going to have more of those types of particles in there and that needs to ozone, causing things such as air conditioning, conditional flight, task force. The next factor here, I talked a little bit about the track that's Southeast Michigan. We certainly do want to maintain our leadership role in electrifying more voting, engine fracturing for cars, battery plants. We've made these huge parties, we're gonna be one of the top three states, this is the graph on the right table, that's the map of the 448. It shows that we will be one of the top three states as of 2030 in battery plant capacity. And obviously, we'll hit a lot of vehicles, and you can see the red dots there for vehicle assembly locations. Battery electric vehicles are far more efficient than internal combustion engines. However, they do require a lot of electricity. And therefore, we need to be planning head forward, how we'll supply our transportation sector when it becomes electrified. Sorry. Another key factor, MITC seeks to attract innovative only companies who are likely to install solar. It's your R and D space, they're attracting lots, large tracts of land designed for global technology, mobility, license, engineering innovations. And Township, my apologies, did get the word dispersion in front of you. Township is also seeking novel companies. I'm gonna just call out Rivian as one. They are in southeast, northeast corner of Township, and they produce electric vehicle, both SUV and truck. And companies like that, in their facility where they manufacture in Illinois, they have carports in their parking lot and solar. I know they have carports, and a lot of renewable energy on site to help with their manufacturing. So if you want to attract more companies like Rivian, this lack of solar could be an impediment to their image that they want to project. Currently, as we mentioned, the township is not equipped to review and approve all types of solar energy systems. The zoning ordinance is, are a dry, obviously don't need to tell you guys, but building codes separately, master plans, park plans, statements by municipal or township. Zoning ordinance should follow provisions, but if you don't have up-to-date zoning ordinances for today's technology, then there are gaps and that can cause a lot more things to come to especially you. And more things to come from you, and you don't have any ability to judge them by. Just a few more slides, what can this look like? You guys have seen Michigan State University's parking lot, they have over 5,000 parking spots covered with carports, solar. Here's more non-traditional solar energy systems. You've got bi-spatial panels, meaning that they obviously capture the sun on the top side, but on the bottom side, it also gets reflected in sunlight off surfaces. So you've got a pergola, pavilion type situation on the bottom left. You have vertically mounted, and more farming kind of look on the bottom right and top left. And they got archipelagos that we did a design, piano over the parking lot. All right, so now, just the quick highlights, accurate summary of the solar ordinance. I know you guys have received the copy, I'm happy to go through it in full detail. However, just for everyone in the room, the intent of the Environmental Leadership Commission is to encourage environmental design by deserving woodlands and wetlands in place. So that is definitely accounted for in this ordinance. Second, want to provide for a renewable, abundant, non-compluting, quiet, and local energy resource. Cost less than transporting electrons far from the power plant if you're just producing them adjacent to your property on your local distribution grid. Protecting property owners' rights, in this sense, they could generate. If you have solar panels on the battery, it's generated. If you think that you should have the right to generate, I would argue that people should have the right to putting solar on their property that they own and have your battery per electric roads. This zoning ordinance is going to enable proprietors in various different situations, maybe the top of their house, it's a lot of shade, and their backyard is numb. They would like to put some solar panels on the ground. This ordinance would allow projects like that to be considered if they follow. This uh, ordinance would allow projects like that to be considered if they follow the rules of the decided by the county commission. And we want to allow this uh, consideration in various ways to talk about in all zoning districts. Requirements, these are applicable to all solar energy systems, SES is on the air as an acronym. A building permit is always required, all systems must comply with the most recent construction requirements, things like that. A decommissioning plan is required for any solar energy system that covers more than one acre. Removal is required after twelve consecutive months of malfunction, or more than ninety days after the period of malfunction. For SES that cover an acre or greater. A study regarding feasibility of dual-use site design is required before planning for a planning feature. Uh, dual use, you're probably wondering what am I talking about, that will get there, just briefly, I'll cover a few things first. Solar photovoltaic, uh, PV. This is a type of solar energy system that uses semiconductor materials to convert solar energy directly into electricity. Components which are solar panels, mounting devices, invertors of base, easy, easy, easy to access. And wiring. So, by definition, a roof-mounted solar energy system is anything that's mounted on wrapping that is attached to. Or balanced on, uh, weight down. Balanced on a roof, a building or structure. Solar panels fixed on the roof of a carport structure that will also be roof-mounted. Or mounted in a pergola type of freestanding canopy. These are all roof-mounted solar energy systems, I'm going to summarize. A double-integrated solar energy system is where the panels are an integral part of a primary or accessory building or structure. Rather than a separate mechanical device, they replace or substitute for an architectural or structural component of the building or structure. Building integrated systems are improved but are not linked to building integrated PV, as we talked about. Which could be things like, uh, I'll get into that in a second, but. There are shingles at home, uh, you can get shingles from various manufacturers, including roofing companies. And a lot of people, also names like Kessler, provide. The roofing material itself is not mounted, it is the solar panel, and that would be considered building integrated. You can also get hot water solar energy system. And these can, all of these types of systems can be contained within roof materials, windows, that is also something that can work on. To gather a little bit of energy for your electric grid. Lights, skylights, awnings, fences and like walls. So, uh, as promised, we is, uh, let's see, so it's a sub-type, um, basically what we're saying is. If you're going to build a project, um. Mostly supplies to products over acre, which probably will be pretty few in, in the township if you're finding, um. Solar sites designed to have score of seven sets on a Michigan habitat score card for pollinators every time butterflies use that kind of thing. Uh, more conservation properties are purposely planting. Uh, specific species of plants that are endangered or um, habitat for specific birds. These can be done in conjunction with the most uh, panels. And so the idea here is a dual use is increasing overall productivity, how many things are happening on that property. Uh, including, uh, carpool allows you to shade your car from the hot sun. Uh, say we're going through snow and rainfall and these are all things that are sub-benefits of. Uh, infrastructure that we use once or, um. Final slide here, then we'll go to questions. The use standards, the stable, uh, openly, it does take a little bit to digest. But what we've got is we've got four different types. And I'm going to start on the bottom, actually, principal use. If someone has a personal and they would like to put solar panels on the ground. Of any size, this is special land use. And this is put on special land use process through the property commission for all residential districts. If you're in a non-residential district, then if you have more than an acre proposed on your principal use, nowhere. Home or anything's on that site. That non-residential district also, because of three acres, working on is also special land use. Specifically, that parcel will be reviewed specifically that way. And uh, right on that, we have uh, less than an acre, now, non-residential districts. We are calling that those types of rich circumstances. Can ensure the review at more of an administrative level and all the non-residential districts. Finally, as a special use, probably the farm I thought was common. Is uh, including like the roof-mounted, building integrated, on the ground, including accessory use contracts. In all districts, this, in our view, should be administrative if it follows the rules of the ordinance. Funny, it's on the bottom there, roof-mounted and building-integrated solar energy systems shall. Be shown not exceed the applicable zoning district maximum height, measure not true, one six feet above the mounting surface. Grounded SES shall be mounted on a rack, what kind, is attached to or balanced on the ground. This is common in brownfield sites and on top of landfills where they don't need to show a ladder. They put a looking down set of, they have waterfield, sandhill, uh, containers, and then they attach right. What happens to that, and so you go into limited things, uh, the ground is fully vulnerable. These mounted SES shall be located in a rear or inside yard. The SBS is referring to principal use in non-residential districts, it's one that we're not mentioning. A maximum height of fifteen feet uh, above ground for the top edge of the panel. Must be located at least ten feet from the principal building. And the solar energy system must be at least five feet set back from the property. I apologize for going through that so slowly, I know that was about ten full minutes. Uh, hopefully that was helpful for everyone in the audience and also hear our information. And now I will take my questions from there.
So, what I see happening, what you gave was a very interesting presentation. Oh, okay, would you, I see two parts to this. The part that you just reviewed, that sort of the technology and the benefits of solar. And then the second one, I believe, is the ordinance itself, so. Um, Nami, are you going, are you going to prepare sometime, some kind of a presentation? Should, if so, do we do that now, or do we take questions from him currently? How, how would you like to proceed?
So, we will need to open the public hearing soon, it's your choice whether you'd like me to speak before or after that agenda item.
Well, usually we have the presentations done before the uh, public hearing, so people can be. As educated as they can be in the time that we have available.
Absolutely, so.
If you're, if you're, uh, are prepared now, we can do that part now.
Yeah.
And then certainly we want to hear from you, we'll ask questions.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, alright.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Gielings for coming and presenting this PowerPoint. The Environmental Leadership Commission has done a lot of work on this ordinance and also they've prepared it, um, you know, without cost to the township, which is an amazing thing. So, I don't have a PowerPoint to go alongside this, but I think, let's just summarize about what this would look like, right? What, what would this change in the township if it was enacted? Um, basically, in residential districts, it would allow people to put solar panels on their rooftops, so long as they don't stick up more than six feet. Uh, and as well as some small solar panels in, you know, a backyard. Uh, or in a front yard if properly screened with hedges and those sorts of things. But given that the best place to get sun is on the roof of your house, we would expect that most of the residential applications would simply be for rooftop solar. And we've actually already received residential applications for that, right now, they're just being processed in the building department, like any other electrical application. But this would give guidance on, you know, what they can look like and where they can go. In the non-residential district, it could appear in two ways, one is being mounted on top of a building or a carport, or being an independent structure. So, um, in that case, anything that is greater than one acre of solar would go through the special land use process. Everything else that's smaller than that would be administrative.
What would happen if, if, um, it was in conflict with the CCRs and an, and an HOA?
So, the, the HOA is the ultimate regulator, um, so in the same way that the HOA regulates what color you can paint your house. The township doesn't regulate that at all, but you know, when you opt into an HOA's bylaws, that you're consenting to that as a property owner. So if an HOA forbids it, it would be forbidden.
Okay.
May I jump in there?
Sure.
Uh, there is something in front of the state legislature which would, um, counteract the ability of an HOA to specifically outlaw solar. I, I don't know if that'll pass, but I believe, uh, the HOAs do fall under.
Well, it might be in the CCRs because the CCRs are twenty years old and, uh. You know, I mean, you know, solar's kind of come of age now, twenty years ago, it, it wasn't what it is today. Um, so I could see that, I, I didn't have time to check the CCRs in my HOA, but I think there was something in there though, if I recall. Um, prohibiting the installation of panels on the rooftops.
That, that certainly could be in certain HOAs if that's been documented, uh, my particular HOA. Um, these were written late sixties, so, uh, not, not contemplated by the HOA.
So, Nani, if you wanted to put solar panels on your roof right now, you just have to apply through the building department?
Yep, just a, a permit, um, and we don't, like Eric said, we don't prohibit them at all, but we also don't specify where they can go or how tall they can be. So right now, you're just limited by the maximum building height in your district.
Okay, so this, this just kind of clarifies everything and puts it in an ordinance?
Yep, basically, so we did the same thing with wind a while back, you know, we're just kind of playing catch-up with the things that are emerging right now. Lots of communities are having the same issue with food trucks, where they're realizing they don't say yes or no, they just say nothing. So this is just like that, where we interject and actually make some rules.
You said something about, uh, mounting on roofs, that it couldn't stick up more than six feet, what do you mean by that?
Sure, so let me find the exact section in the draft, duh, 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 one moment. Alright, so the U standards for roof-mounted solar energy systems is that they cannot exceed the height of the underlying zoning district. Or protrude an additional six feet above the surface. So, let's say our maximum building height is thirty-five feet in a residential district, right? That means it can't go above thirty-five feet. However, if you have a one-story home that's only twelve feet high, you also can't erect like a twenty-foot-high pole and then put the solar panels on top of that. It can't eject more than six feet above the roof of your house, because we don't want people making weird towers on top of their home just to get the solar panels up really high. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Where does that add in the document?
Sure, that is, so if you go to the actual ordinance section, it's on page two, under section two, permitted uses. And there's U standards for roof-mounted ones, separate U standards for ground-mounted ones, and then there's U standards that apply to both types.
Okay, got it.
And what did you use as a guideline in, in drafting this ordinance together, your other municipalities or? Uh, either the solar industry has some guidelines or how do you write?
So I will defer to Eric in just a moment because I didn't actually draft this ordinance. Um, but we used the state of Michigan or, sorry, Michigan State's guide on solar energy systems. They have, you know, analyzed all of the different solar ordinances across the state and given best practice recommendations for what municipality should adopt. And then also looking at some other related communities around us that have similar character types. You know, similar land uses, similar exposure to sun, those sorts of things, but yeah, Eric, do you have anything else to add to that?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, that's true, um, it's actually Michigan and Michigan State co-authored the, uh, this, this guidance. Um, looking at solar ordinances throughout the state of Michigan that municipalities have adopted. Clearly, if you are a farming community with only homes and no real, um. Significant business, industrial, commercial zones, then, uh, they need to decide how and where. They will allow a property owner that wishes to put part of their property in agriculture and part of their property in solar, um, production. To get a check, uh, and supplement their income that way. Uh, those types of solar ordinances are very different, obviously. So, the, the guide is, is substantial, um, and it has a lot of different nuances to consider. Uh, which we, which we did, and we've kind of picked the approach that best fits, uh, a township such as Plymouth. Uh, in our view, um. And then, as I said, I'm currently working on a project with the Department of Energy, uh, federal. They have the National Global Energy Lab experts and they were, uh, one of the communities here in Michigan was awarded a grant. For technical assistance and I'm leading something between the federal experts and the community itself. So I've learned a lot about, uh, various cutting edge types of ordinances. And, uh, solar being one of the things we've covered and reviewed. So, this, uh, I should say, something very similar to this was discussed at length with those experts. And, uh, wording was modified here and there to, to make sure that it was, uh, appropriate. And, um, we do believe it is a good, um, starting point. And if you had any ideas for things you would like to see modified, certainly that, that is up to the planning commission. However, it does, um, it is a little bit of a learning curve, I will say, so, um, I guess. Hopefully, hopefully you can, uh, see that a lot has gone into this and, uh, that the content here is not, um. Anything unordinary, it's, it's just getting ordinances so that the township can oversee. Um, beyond the building department for unique situations and things can come before you if they are particularly, uh, large. So, I won't end there, I don't know if I fully answered the question, if there's follow-up questions to that, I can try to answer better.
Well, another question that I would have is, um, so you talked about some of the rural communities that, uh, I think are, um. Have the space to put a lot of solar panels up as opposed more in an urban setting? Have there been very many municipalities in an urban setting that have adopted this type of ordinance?
It is, it is fairly, um, uniform, it's about fifty percent now of the municipalities in Michigan. It used to be, I think in the study itself that we're referring to, I think it was two thousand nineteen. Um, back then it was forty percent, if I'm going from memory, so essentially, um. No, it's not just the rural that have done this, it's also the urban, um, suburban, so it's a cross-section of the state.
Has there been an opportunity to see how well that, uh, the ordinance has worked or what some of the failures might be, how it might be able to be improved?
Yeah, uh, one thing, I'll just take an example, one thing that, uh, can get interesting, more so in an urban environment. Is you start thinking about, what if I put ground mount solar on my backyard? And then the zoning district next to me might be a four-story is fine. And my solar panels are south-facing as they should be, towards the equator, uh, south or west is decent, but what, south is a little too hot. What if someone builds a building there, I mean, do you have any way to get, when you're making your investment? Can you obtain a three-dimensional solar access easement? Over the property of what area sunlight come from? It can get really, really down into a really challenging, uh, legal side of things, so this.
That'd be difficult.
Version does not contemplate those sorts of, uh, I would say extremely rare currencies. But if you have a lot of people building things right next to each other, then yeah, that becomes a bigger issue of. Having a right to sunshine on your property, uh, essentially.
Even in the. Or when trees grow up, and neighbors trees grow up.
Yeah.
No, over twenty years, the trees will change the whole pattern of the sunlight on your property.
That's true. And the solar panels, uh, mine have a warranty of twenty-five years, so I mean, I, we did the shingles and then. Within about a year, we decided that was the time, otherwise. Be ripped off shingles and then trucked in, it'd just be way more cost to, to do it on the older roof and then tear off the roof and do this over here.
So how would you handle a situation, you, you've got your solar panels up? And your next-door neighbor decides to expand his house, it's a two-story situation and now. Uh, that neighbor has created a shadow line across your solar panel. And now, that neighbor has created a shadow line across your solar panels.
So, with the setbacks that we have, five feet from the property line for ground-mounted solar in a backyard, knowing that you have rear yard setbacks for the other zoning districts, that should not be an issue. Where that would most likely be an issue is where you have different zoning districts coming up next to each other, where you can have more extreme differences in the heights of, of structures. But, we have a lot of open space. Not saying we have large contiguous spaces, but we certainly have a lot of, a lot of space. And if someone wants to put up a small number in the appropriate location, it's, it's a little bit cheaper to do it on the ground than it is on your roof. So, in terms of your bang for your buck, we think that that situation is highly unlikely to occur. And at that point, it's, I guess, a discussion between neighbors. We don't, we don't think that you guys should be in the middle of neighbor disputes over things like that.
Ain't going there.
So, we want to put that in the zoning.
No, no, no.
So, Nanny, do you have a sense as, in the last 12 months, how many applications that we've received or strong interest?
Unfortunately, I didn't ask the building department before coming here today, but it's not very many. You know, it's like maybe once every few months. And part of that is because folks just don't have any guidance yet. So, especially with the ice storms that we all saw earlier this year, you know, that knocked out our power for days and days, we do expect them to be getting more popular over time. In the same way that portable generators are getting more popular over time.
It says that it can't be closer than 10 feet to a principal building and five feet from a side yard. Is that cumulative if homes are like closer together? Is it really 15 feet then or is it still just the 10?
So, closer than 10 feet to a principal building and five feet from the side yard. So, they are not cumulative. So, let's say you have a 40-foot backyard. It would, and you have a building right there, but the required backyard is 10 feet, right? So, it'd have to be 15 feet in from the backyard line and at least 10 feet away from the house. So, it kind of gives it like a middle zone where you can adjust where it goes. Does that make sense?
So, you could basically have your whole backyard as, within like the five feet from the property line, 10 feet from your house, as solar panels? And it can be as high as, I think I read, 15 feet? And you could have an eight-foot fence?
So, it cannot exceed 15 feet in height at the maximum tilt. So, that's if your panel is mounted at six feet and you tilt it up, that'd be 15 feet, yes.
And you could have an eight-foot fence around it.
Mm-hmm. And the reason for that is, right now, it's similar to our accessory structure height. So, I think accessory structures are 12 feet right now. Similarly, we know there's no fence that's going to stop you from seeing everything in your neighbor's yard at some point. But, we're trying to set reasonable standards for screening. And, yeah, as long as it's under one acre, you could occupy that portion of your backyard with solar panels.
And do you think that's reasonable, the five feet from the property line and 10 feet from the structure? And the resident, I'm thinking like our main residential areas in here, not people that have an acre or more of land, but the ones that have, you know, a quarter acre.
Yeah, understood. They, I think they're reasonable in that these are the exact same standards we use for garages and other sheds. So, basically, it's subject to the same recommendations that we have for any other accessory structure. And that's just, you know, for safety purposes, to prevent fires or any other sort of conflict, and also to keep you from running up against, you know, the fence lines that you might share with a neighbor. But, if you folks think that should be changed, you can certainly issue that as a recommendation as this, you know, moves through the process because it's a part of the zoning code and that's all your duty as well.
Yeah, that's a concern that I have is that close to the property line? And then also, as far as the angle of the solar panels, like glare into, does it reflect into a neighbor's house?
I'll defer to Eric on that one.
Yeah, common question. These days, the technology that is being, if you're purchasing solar panels now, in many cases, even if you're right next to an airport, that's, it's not even a concern. Essentially, the whole idea is to capture as much sunlight as you can. And if your surface is perfectly glass-smooth, then, and not coated properly and not sufficiently black and all the different properties of a solar panel to get as much energy out of that sunlight as they can, the amount of reflectivity is, is not as much of a concern as it was two decades ago. Not to say that there could not be a small amount of, I mean, you see, you see sun reflecting off your neighbor's pool. You see sun reflecting off your neighbor's basketball, their glass window. I mean, there are other things that reflect light similarly to a solar panel. So, I would say it's certainly not blinding when you're staring at a solar panel that's getting direct sunlight. You're, you're not getting, you're not getting a significant amount of reflectivity.
I had reflects light like that.
I mean, I'd be interested in having them all as a special land use, at least until we, we have some more experience with this. Similar to what we did with the, the drive-in, the first couple of years, they had to come back every year till we, they got an idea what they were doing. We got an idea what they were doing because this is new. And then also, that would give notice to the neighbors and they would be able to at least know what was going on or comment on it. So, that's kind of my two cents on the special land use, if they were all special land uses at least originally. And then also, if, if someone wanted to encroach on the five feet, say there was M14 behind them or something, would that go to the ZBA?
Mm-hmm, yep. Just like any other standard, if they wanted deviation, it would go before the zoning board reveals. So, I will mention in most other places with regards to the roof-mounted solar, like the ones that go on the buildings, those are almost always administrative. But, we could discuss the possibility of maybe the ground-mounted ones having a higher level of review.
Okay.
So, are you suggesting they would come to the planning commission for, for anything that is?
I guess ground-mounted.
Ground-mounted?
And then we could always, if it didn't seem necessary at a later date, we could always amend the ordinance to say it could be done administratively. But, I'm just concerned about, you know, like, like this could be my neighborhood. It could be, you know, I have smaller lots and to have, just to see what it could happen to neighbors.
In other words, we can always make it less restrictive, but we can't make it more restrictive.
So, you can make it more restrictive.
We, we could change it, right? If it, if it gets.
By then, the horse is out of the barn.
Right.
But, if it's, well, you've been doing it administratively so far.
Ground ones.
But, all of them, right?
No.
We haven't had.
You haven't had a ground one?
Yes. So, rooftop applications are what the building department has been receiving.
So, you said you have a ground one?
No, sorry, my roof, I apologize if I said ground.
Oh, just roof, you don't have, you don't have a ground one?
And roof is the most common. People typically like to keep their backyards, their backyards, you know what I mean?
What street are you on?
Yeah.
I'm really interested, I'm really curious.
Unfortunately, my house faces south, so they are on the front. I would have preferred that I had on the back, but they, we're on Betty Hill.
Has there been any consideration with the fire department as far, you know, I'm looking, again, thinking of the ground mounting, if they fill up their whole backyard, if somebody wants to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Has there been some coordination, some feedback from the fire department as far as can they get their equipment around? We always hear about, you know, them having access to the building and those kinds of issues.
Yep, so that's part of what the 10-foot separation from any principal building requirement is for. You know, just like with a garage, you don't want to have to muscle your way through someone's garage to get into the back door of their house. So, this would be a similar requirement.
So, that has been looked at by the fire department?
Yeah, and I will say, you know, having an electric carport in your garage is much greater fire hazard than ever putting a solar panel on any part of your property, so.
I have a question at the bottom of this page. Where it says ground-mounted SES must be located in the rear side yard. If screened per subsection F below, I didn't see where, what subsection F was. I didn't see that in the report for that screen.
Do, 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 do. So, that is a mistype. It should say subsection six. So, that, thank you for catching that. That is us numbering that incorrectly.
Subsection six.
Six.
So, basically saying, say, for example, your house is set back at the very far setback of your property. Like, your house is way at the back because it's an older home. It would allow you to put it in your front yard, but you'd have to screen it so that absolutely no one could see it with landscaping.
Okay, that makes sense. So, it's just number six, all right.
Yeah, and it's similar, like, if your house was really set back and you had to put the pool in your front yard because you have nowhere else to put it, we require you to screen those types of things.
How do you, if you screen it though, doesn't that block the sun?
And the sun comes down from above and we see it from the side, so, yeah, should be okay.
And there's no problem with our grass ordinance if they let, I don't know how they would cut the grass if they had a ground-mounted solar panel?
Yeah, I'd have to refer to the electric coat, but I believe the bottom edge of the panels would be 30 inches above grade, I want to say. Maybe it's 24. But, it's a pretty significant distance between the bottom edge of the panel and anything electrical. And then everything else is in conduits from there, just like any other electrical equipment. So, unless someone is violating the eight inches grass height for the township, there's a significant buffer there between anything that is allowed to be growing in the township underneath, under the ground.
And I would like to just clarify something that I think Eric mentioned earlier about reflection, right? So, if light is being reflected off a solar panel, that inherently means it's not being absorbed and not being turned into energy. So, solar panel manufacturers have gotten really good in making sure as much light is absorbed and as little is reflected as possible just to make their product better. So, when you think about like the original solar panels that came out that had that glass, those were honestly really inefficient. And today, most of them are like a matte finish and they just absorb all that light. Yeah.
And maybe you mentioned it and I missed it, but what about the solar panels that are put on the sides of the house?
Yes, so, for building-integrated, just to distinguish the two, between roof-mounted and building-integrated, if you had racking installed on top of your shingles, a couple inches above there, solar panels, if it's mounted on the roof, it cannot hang over the edges of the roof. It must stay within the roof. However, if you had a, you could have a south-facing wall and you could put a solar panel on that wall, it would, I don't have personal experience with this, but I'm trying to, as long as you're meeting electric codes, again, we're, we're in that space of, it's building electrical permits, construction codes, fire codes, electrical codes. Everything for the trades is still applicable. I'm an engineer, I'm not a tradesman, so I can't honestly say exactly what rules apply for on the side of the house. But, what, what you can be assured of is it will be to code if it is, if it's approved and permitted to be built, it will be to code. This would just say that they are allowed to do that if they can do it to code. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's good enough, I guess, for right now because this is sort of breaking new ground. So.
Sure.
I think there's a learning curve on everybody's part.
Yep.
Just, we try to make the right decision for the knowledge that we have at hand. Does the commission have anything at this point before I open the public hearing? Okay, well, with that, I will, if you could just have a seat for a minute, we'll probably call you back up. I'll open the public hearing at 8:02. So, same as before, if anyone here that wishes to speak to us, just come up, give us your name and address if you desire, and you have three minutes. So, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this?
We need a motion to open the hearing.
We've never done that before. We don't usually do that.
To open a public hearing?
Yeah, just open it up.
Oh, we, you're, well, we're supposed to do a motion to open the public hearing, for sure.
Oh, okay. Well, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing at 8:03 PM.
Support?
Support.
Okay, and there's a motion to open the public hearing. Is all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, is there anyone here that wishes to speak? Okay, come on up. So far, we can.
So, I, I didn't understand, I didn't understand what you were, what you're, what are you asking?
I'm sorry?
Are you asking, is there an ask there? I didn't quite understand.
There's an ask from the commission, consider this.
Are you, are you asking about if, if it's integrated into the building, like it's part of your shingles and there's no longer, and it's no longer collecting sunlight, do we have to remove them? I think that's, is that what you're asking?
Right. Even though it's still functioning, has a shingle.
Right.
I don't know.
Good question.
Okay, well, we'll ask that question. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, do we need a motion to close the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing at 8:06?
I move that we close the public hearing at 8:06.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barbara Green and support by Commissioner Boyd to close the public hearing at 8:06. All in favor, signify by c and aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So, who can answer the question that the gentleman just asked us?
So, Green is on, correct, okay. Building-integrated PV is pretty rare in Michigan, so I think it was not fully contemplated by the guide that we were following. I think that's a fair point. The, the way it was written was more meant for these ground-mounted systems that are, could become decades from now isolated or not.
Is that you?
It, it would be sort of like a dilapidated shed. You know, if someone's not maintaining a, a building, this would be something that would say if you, if you have a system that is not doing its, its function. Now, if there's more than one function and it's actually part of your house keeping you dry and whatnot, I think that we should seriously consider ways that we can address that concern from a building-integrated because of the shingle-type design. For a roof-mounted, I guess, yeah, I'd have to consider that a little bit longer, but we did write it knowing that, yes, if someone has panels and then they, for whatever reason, fail to not be fixed, that things come out, then they're not, they're not something that we want to just sit around on people's rooftops for 40 years beyond that. So.
You know, I, I think where we are with some of the technologies is where we were probably 20 years ago when the big TV dishes showed up.
True.
And, you know, they were 20 feet, I don't know, diameter or whatever, and people didn't like them and there were, you know, restrictions and the HOA documents and that kind of thing. And now, it's virtually a non-issue. So, I have somewhat of a concern, which is a difficult concern to try to resolve because the technology is changing so much.
Yeah.
And about maybe a month or two ago, I happened to see something in the paper and if I had known this was coming up, I would have, you know, read it more thoroughly. But, it showed some pictures of rooftop solar panels, but they didn't look like what we see today. They were almost like the shingle types, but they were like alternates or like coarse of bricking, so they looked a little more acceptable to some people. Are you familiar with that at all?
Yeah, there's, I mentioned the Tesla ones before and they come in various different shades, sort of styles even. Yeah, there's, I mentioned the Tesla ones before, and they come in various different shades, sort of styles even. Sort of the southwest shingle kind of look. I'm not remembering the name of that at the moment. But the one that I'm familiar with that looks more like a shingle is a long skinny shingle. And on the ends, it has a place where the roofers nail it to your roof, just like they do all the other shingles. On the other side, same thing, and the panels string together electrically to produce power, but it's, it's a wide, just looks like a really wide shingle, and so you'd have, I don't know, twenty little rectangles on your roof, but it's flush mounted to your.
Sorry to interrupt you. Can you pick up the microphone? They can't pick it, they're not picking you up on the feed.
Okay.
Or bend the gooseneck up a little, yeah?
Yeah, sorry about that.
Yeah, that's probably.
To, I guess, quickly summarize the answer there. Familiar with the rectangular type of shingles where the center of a long rectangle is solar panel and the edges can be, and are meant to be nailed by roofers into your roof as part of their installation process, similar to the rest of your shingles adjacent to them. Tesla ones, I can't speak to those, but I know they are becoming more common, and I think they are available nationwide now. For many years, they were only available out west essentially.
So, Naomi, what is, what are you looking for, for, from us today? Are you looking for a recommendation from, from us to the board of trustees? Or can we review this over the next month or two, or, you know, where are we, if you can explain that process?
Sure. So as a zoning ordinance amendment, we are looking for a recommendation to the board of trustees. The board is prepared to take this up at their next meeting. So that was the intent of today. If you believe there's any, you know, really major items that require deferring it, that is up to you. But yeah, the, the board is ready to discuss this item further.
I do like Commissioner Barbarina's idea that she put forth, if there was some way, I'm not, not restricting anything, but some period of, of trial, similar to what we did with the drive-in movie at the, at the hockey arena, because we were a little concerned about what movies would be shown. So they did an annual report for us for about three years, I think it was. They gave us a list of, you know, movies that they had shown. There was no problem, like every year we would approve it.
Issues they had.
Right, just so they would have that. And if there was some way to monitor the, the technology, you know, some of these questions, some of the objections that people might have, might go away as the technology improves. So I don't know, that's some thoughts of mine, and turn that over to the commission if they want to mull that over, or?
I'm okay either way. I mean, if, if you want to do that, I'm fine with it, but, you know, I don't, I don't have a strong opinion either way.
I, I guess I'm the outlier here. I believe that the proposals for non-residential districts are very compelling and make a lot of sense. I'm very concerned with the proposed changes in residential districts, particularly the paragraph at the bottom of page two of the ordinance regarding the ground mounted SES. This is something we have apparently no experience with in the township at this point. The idea that we would be, by approving this as written, we would be, in effect, encouraging people to place ground mounted SESs in their yards. I think is, would be a fundamental change to the character of our residential districts. I'm particularly alarmed about the idea that some of them might be mounted in the front yard with an eight-foot fence. Our zoning laws were just recently amended just to allow six-foot fences, so this goes beyond that. I, I, so my view would be, in a, in a perfect world, is that we approve this for non-residential districts, but that we take a very cautionary approach for residential districts, particularly regarding the ground mounted SES portion of this. I'm not sure how to do that, but I'm very concerned that, as written, this proposal for residential districts would, has, has the opportunity to substantially change the character of our residential districts, and I'm not comfortable with that right now as written.
Other comments or concerns?
No, I, I would agree with that. I think he articulated that very well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm definitely, as you heard my earlier comments, I'm concerned about the residential areas and, and the impact on their neighbors.
So are you thinking about a recommendation that would involve allowing rooftop and building integrated in residential districts, and then deferring ground mounted residential to a later date for consideration?
I think that would be up to the commission to.
Is that what you want to do?
Pardon me?
Is that what you want to do?
Well, I, I would prefer to see ground mounted SES not be part of this, at this point in time.
In residential districts?
In residential districts, correct.
Okay, but okay with the rooftop?
Personally, I'm not crazy about it, but I think in, in the big picture, it's probably the right thing.
Yeah, the projection part on the rooftop is concerning to me, that they can go up, but fifteen feet or?
They still can't exceed the, the district maximum, so you're not going to have a thirty-five foot house with an, like an additional ten feet of solar panel on top, if that makes sense.
But what about a two-story house next to a ranch?
So the, the ranch could have solar panels on their roof that go up six feet like this, if they tilted to accommodate the sun, yeah.
Okay, just six feet?
Mm-hmm, yeah, over the projection of their rooftop.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're not going to get like an Arby's sign on the pole with a solar panel on top.
That's what I'm thinking of, is a billboard on a ranch, next to, you know, in close proximity to a two-story home that,
Yeah, that's current.
They had a beautiful view before, and now they're looking at basically a non-reflective billboard, it sounds like.
Yeah, that's prohibited in the way we've designed it today.
I, I wonder, would it help if we could see some diagrams or drawings of showing how the roof-mounted panels would, would look in the residential districts? So I'm not sure, I have a clear understanding of just how that would play out right now from the verbal description.
Sure, so Bob, would you mind pulling up just regular old Google?
Regular old Google?
Yep, and Googling solar shingle.
As opposed to what Google?
I don't know.
Google what? Solar what?
Yep, solar shingle.
Solar shingles. She sells, she sells solar shingles.
And then head to the images tab at the top. On the far left, there you go, and scroll down a little bit past the advertising. So these are an idea of what a solar shingle system would look like if you replaced, you know, all of your shingles with solar. And if you imagine like a panel that has many of these shingles composed in it, it would stick up, you know, just be placed on your roof and project about this much away from the actual distance of the roof. So they kind of look like, I don't know, you could imagine them as flower boxes that kind of sit on there, that are about, you know, maybe four inches in depth on top of the shingles, or they'd be fully integrated into the shingles like this.
These are cool.
So I think that one in the middle where it says modern solar panels, stock photo right there, that's a good example of what it might look like set on top of a shingle system. And like I said, they could project a little ways away from the roof, because sometimes they're within their own panel container, not necessarily integrated into the shingles. But it would only, they typically project about this much if they have a panel encasement.
And what about the ones that could move, like?
Sure, so some do have, you know, electronic devices that help them tilt to capture the sun. And they, I can't say they tilt very much, they're not like a three sixty capture, as you would see with an industrial solar farm. They're really just minor adjustments as the sun, so they would tilt up and down a little bit depending on the time of day. And also, these are most efficient when placed on the south side of homes. So if you have a house where the only place that gets sun is north-facing, you know, the, the tilt isn't necessarily going to help you.
What about as far as snow accumulation?
Sure, so I'm going to let Eric speak to that one, as someone who owns a solar panel on his home.
Or storms, or, you know, tornadoes, lightning storms.
Hail.
They don't work at night either, do they?
They do not work at night, no. Okay, so the questions, Commissioner Barbarina?
Like weather, snow, hail, lightning, tornadoes.
Okay, I can cover most of those, I, I believe. Snow, on, on my particular roof, it's, if you wanted to Google, solar roof, solar, residential solar roof racking, racking, R-A-C-K. I think that would give you a picture of kind of what the style I'm going to refer to for my own system. I would say it's about three inches, the left photo there is fairly similar to what I've got. Underneath, there's kind of two support beams that are at various locations affixed to the roof, and then the panels are affixed to the little beams, the racking. And so they are a little above your roof. So my similar-sized system, this is a dozen panels, if I'm counting right. It appears to be very similar. Mine are right next to each other, and my roof actually does change slope in the middle of, so it's a little flatter on the bottom ones than on the top ones. I do not have any sort of tilt in addition to this slope of the roof. The tilt systems, I would say, would be more likely to be used, far more likely to be used on a ground mount. Maybe on roof mount, such as the system you're seeing there above this one. Above that one, you can see there's a little, oh, that's a little more on, it's hard to scale. Okay, so snow, it does build up, obviously reduces, we have really cloudy winters here in Michigan. I do not make, our system does not make much electricity in the winter months. Snow does rest on the panels, but in terms of their structural integrity, they are built to withstand snow loads, same as any other. I can, you can, you can purchase for mounting on a roof, again, with the building codes and standard industry practice. Over the years, these, these panels are, are robust in terms of being able to handle snow, ice. What you're really losing is if it's blocking sunlight, you're not making energy. But in a summer, the added benefit of having it above your roof is there is a little air gap there for, essentially for the top shingles there that are beneath, and then you don't have as much sun heat heating up your attic underneath. Okay, hail, so they are rated to, and then you can get different, different levels, I guess you could say, of hail resistance. Tesla seems to be particularly proud of theirs being significant size hail and not racking. Standard solar panels, typical hailstorms, fine. After God, hailstorms coming on. I don't have the technical specs to notice, I'm healthy, unfortunately, on hail. Wind, again, it's, it's per building code, it's, it's a fixed way that is, it is permanent, it is, it is.
What about the ground ones, the ground-mounted ones, though, as far as like tornadoes and high winds?
The ground mount, so all of the ground mount racking would need to be signed by a structural engineer. So they do the wind calculations, they do the inloading based on that particular designed site. And that would be required by departments here when they're reviewing the electrical, the building codes. They could be reviewing whether or not the system is, someone designed it in their basement and it's going to fly away versus something that is actually engineered and installed by a computer install.
So it'd be part of the application process, then?
Yes, and I'm surprised, I guess I'll defer back to you. I guess lightning is the other question.
Sure, so it wouldn't make your house any more vulnerable to lightning than your house is today. So the most, like, objects that attract lightning are exceptionally tall objects or objects that are in a very large, open expanse. So that's why you often see people get hit by lightning on golf courses, or like that big, you know, clock tower that we have out there would obviously be a target. But since this is basically at the same height as your roof, there's really not much else to expect. When a tornado comes, if a tornado comes, I, it's probably at just as much risk as your garage or any other structure on your property, because tornadoes are a pretty big deal, so I'd imagine it'd be toast along with a car or a tree or anything else that the tornado rips up, so.
So the ordinance wouldn't adversely impact your neighbor that has a tree that grows tall and could create a shadow line or the other points?
Yeah, you, you wouldn't be able to compel your neighbor to cut down their tree just to accommodate your volition to install a solar panel.
And the same for if you were building an addition on your home and?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Same, same if you have a swimming pool and their tree grows up.
Yeah, private property rights are always tricky, right?
Questions? If not, do we have a motion of a recommendation to the board of trustees?
So are we talking about it only being permitted right now in ground-mounted in non-residential, but okay for roof-mounted in all districts, or what?
What were your thoughts on that, Tim?
Again, I think that ground-mounted SES in residential districts is not mature enough to be in the part of this. Well, I personally don't particularly like the light of roof-mounted solar. I understand there are bigger considerations. So that part, I'm okay with. So I guess from my perspective, what it would be, would be to propose approving this for all non-residential districts, but do not approve the wording regarding ground-mounted SES in residential districts at this time.
Can you repeat that?
Is that your motion?
Is that, is that your motion?
Uh, yeah, let's, well, okay, it's my motion, yes, that we, the recommendation is we submit the proposal to the board for approval with the following exception, that we remove the wording related to principal use ground-mounted SES units in residential districts.
One question is regarding the principal use ground-mounted less than an acre, what about that being special land use instead of administrative?
I thought we weren't recommending any ground-mounted in residential areas.
In non-res.
That's commercial and industrial, that, she's, she's speaking about commercial and industrial districts.
You want that to be special land use?
It's administrative right now, so thoughts on it being a special land use? This is the second item listed under permitted uses.
Right here on the table.
That makes sense to me.
Okay.
And the reason for taking that direction in the residential is because, because they want to know the thinking behind?
Yeah, because we have no practical experience with this right now, number one. Number two, it has the potential to substantially change the character of our residential yards in our, in our municipality. And I just, I'm, I'm not comfortable with that as a, the degree of change that that opens us up to at this point in time. Probably not said very articulately, but I just, I guess, I guess, to put it another way, we don't know what we're opening ourselves up to by approving this for ground-mounted SES in residential districts. And in, in doing so, the risk is substantial enough that I don't believe we should approve, we should include that piece in the, in the ordinance at this time.
And is, I just want to make sure, so also in that, is the principal use ground-mounted less than one acre going to be a special land use and not administrative?
That's the way I read the proposal, right?
It would be a change to what's up here.
I guess what I'm suggesting is we do not include that last line. I guess what I'm suggesting is we do not include that last line called principal use ground mounted any size in all residential districts.
Right, and then the second one where it says principal use ground mounted under an acre, all non-residential districts administrative?
Yeah, I-
Um thoughts on that being um special land use instead of administrative?
Um I don't have a view one way or the other, I would defer to the-
I would prefer that.
Okay, well, let's include that in the proposal then. That becomes special land use.
Any other considerations to be put in that motion? Okay, is there support for the motion?
I support it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Boyd and supported by Commissioner Itso to recommend to the Board of Trustees approval of um the text amendment to zoning ordinance number nine uh ninety-nine, section twenty, oh, Article twenty-eight, section sixty-two on the solar energy systems subject to said considerations. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, good luck. Next is the um Nationwide Signs.
The Chennai Express or?
Yep, Chennai Express Arc Sign.
Chennai Express is the next one.
So, yeah. Wanna lead us through that discussion?
Absolutely, so I would also like to mention to the public, for those of you who arrived late and didn't hear, the application for the car wash and drive-through restaurant at four zero seven zero zero Ann Arbor Road was withdrawn. So just in case anyone didn't hear that at the beginning of the meeting. So um I thought some of y'all might have missed that. All right, so Chennai Express. Uh this is an application for a wall sign in the same location as the former Shimi Shaq sign, which many of you might remember. Uh previously Raj Palace, you had approved a sign for that site a few months back. Uh Raj Palace has now been replaced by a new business called Chennai Express, al- also an Indian restaurant offering the exact same services, but under a new name. So this new applicant has submitted an application for signage in the exact same location, in that corner that we see, um you know, right next to the CBS. And currently, the commission must decide if the additional projection of the sign is acceptable, just as they did with Raj Palace, you know, to go across that corner. We have reviewed the sign for its size and other compliance with code. We find it meets the overall size requirements and it is entirely composed of channel letters. So last time you remember, the second line of the Raj Palace uh was rejected by the commission because it was a panel. So in this case, these are all freestanding letters, uh so there's no concern as there was last time with that. So sorry, I think I misspoke earlier and said panel, I should have said freestanding, but they're all freestanding letters. So in this case, uh the item before the commission is to determine if the projection is acceptable, given the interior location.
And is the applicant here?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the twenty-three typical Chennai Express replaces the unfortunately, it's a difficult corner and required.
Sir, can you press the button on the mic, you're not on?
Oh, there we go, sorry. Want me to start over?
Uh well, you did, you weren't picked up on the recording.
Okay, uh Michael Zacks, I'm the project manager for Nationwide Sign. Here to present a proposal for Chennai Express Indian Cuisine. Replaces the same location that Raj Palace was in in that corner. Unfortunately, due to the available space that spanned the two uh vertical spaces. It's a typical channel letter sign. All the letters are individual and they're mounted on a common raceway. We think that the sign is aesthetically pleasing and allows them to operate their business. Unfortunately, they've been working with just a banner for the last few months and have struggled to keep pace with their project. If you have any questions for me about the structure of the sign, I'd be happy to answer them. The owners of the business are here as well if you have any questions for them.
And what colors are you looking at?
Uh is for the rendering, it's a subtle yellow and a red.
Are all the letters lit?
All the letters are internally, internally loaded here with LED modules, low voltage.
I've heard it says um the proposed projection from the facade is greater than twelve inches, how much further?
I think it's sixteen inches uh that injects because of the proximity of that short corner.
Okay, sixteen inches, okay.
Other questions? Are we ready for a motion?
Mister Chairman, I move that we approve um application. Application.
There is no application.
There's no application number on here. Okay, well, the Chennai Express Arc signage um at one four four zero South Sheldon Road um that we approve it as presented.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd to uh approve uh said sign. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
We need to get a number put on that or something.
Yeah.
Is that Nani?
Next is application twenty-four eighty, lot fourteen, Concept Drive. And we have your finding report?
Thank you, Commissioners. So you may remember this application from May of this year when they came before you for tentative site plan approval. This is the application for a two thousand, or twenty-five thousand nine hundred eighty-two square foot office and research building on uh lot fourteen of the Metro Plymouth Business Park. And the applicant, uh you know, we've reviewed the changes they have made to the site plan and they've resolved uh most of our comments from last time. The one thing we'd like to draw your attention to is that the metal paneling for the facility is now being proposed as a matte red color. And this color must be found acceptable by the commission. So that's the, the one deviation we wanted to bring your attention to. Otherwise, all of the outstanding issues that were presented at the May meeting have been resolved. And I would also like to introduce you to anyone who has not met her, this is Louisa, she works in our engineering department. So were you here at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay, well, you know, Steve probably met somebody, but uh Louisa is gonna be attending most of the planning commissions now, so we're really happy to have her.
She's a spalding dedector?
Yep, that's correct. So um do you have any outstanding items, Louisa?
Um, well, um, yeah, so we just have some general comments. Um side access will be provided by an existing shared drive approach at the south end on the side and an improvised drive approach in the north end of the site. Uh they have already treaties on site, so they will have no, we have no issues with that. Uh we do have a comment that the criminal fire marshals shall review and approve the hydrant coverage for the site. And uh approval from Wayne County Department of Public Services will be required uh for the proposed underground detention system and stormwater protection on the side. Uh additionally, a drainage easement will be required due to the proposed surface water runoff from the new paved areas in lot fourteen crossing property line into lot thirteen. Uh if there's a really um an incremental place, uh we would just need a record of it. And ano- another drainage easement will be required due to enclosed storm sewer connections to the existing storm system of lot thirteen. Uh based on comment, on the comments stated in our title plan review letter, uh we are recommending approval of the final site plan and with all the additional comments being addressed in the engineering reviews.
And we are also recommending approval with two conditions. Uh one being the submission of a payment in lieu for the sidewalk on Concept Drive. And two, uh the commission determining that the color for the metal paneling is acceptable with the proposed red. So that is the item before you today.
Okay, and the applicant's received a report from the fire department, they have no deficiencies. Have we reviewed the building materials? Were samples brought to us?
They changed them there. So the sample was brought last time, um and I didn't bring it down with me today, I should have brought it down from my office. Um but it's a similar, like brushed metal aluminum panel, but in this case, kinda spray painted red like Bob's water bottle.
Okay. And you're the applicant? Remember, you were asking, do you have anything to add or present?
No, other than we, we changed the color of the metal panel at the direction, not the direct direction, but the suggestion to add some more um very aesthetic to the exterior of the building. And I'm not sure if the three D rendering made it into the drawings you have, but I know the, the drawings, the schematic drawings are much more vibrant than what they would be in real life. So I wanted to just ask this.
Yeah, please.
That'd be great, yeah. I didn't get that, I didn't see it in my pack, yeah. I've been onto this.
Let's bring it to know how much red.
I wanted to get this much paper as well into something.
So it's the, it's the metal panels along the side in the back elevation?
That's correct.
Along the top?
Previously, they had matched the spot.
Okay.
And what are the uh those panels in front of the vehicles, what are they made of?
I'm, I'm sorry, which?
The panels in front of these vehicles right here?
That's masonry.
It's all masonry?
So that would punch out for potential wind.
Gotcha.
In the event the need will require it.
Is, is the red color there a pretty accurate rendition of the red?
Okay.
So it's really more of a burgundy as opposed to a really bright red?
This is the red up here. Okay.
So it's here and like more of a rust?
It's more like a rust color, you said?
Do you see it?
Do you have any comments on it, Nami? Our office is um perfectly fine with the design as presented today, but it's up to the discretion of the commission about whether they approve. Uh you know, of course, we are focused on the payment in lieu for the sidewalk more than the individual design.
Any questions from the commission? If not, are we ready for a motion?
Um Mister Chairman, I move that we approve a final site plan for PC application number two four eight zero, the lot fourteen Concept Drive. Subject to the items in the McKenna report, the Spalding Dedector report, Decker, and um that submission of payment in lieu of the sidewalk along Concept Drive and that the color of the metal paneling for the facade is, is okay.
Second?
Moved by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Greger to approve application twenty-four eighty, subject to said conditions. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, good luck, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nami?
Mm-hmm.
Uh Kenda just raised a point, so the one that was withdrawn?
Yes.
We had the published uh, you know, open or public hearing. Do we need to open that and close it?
No, we don't need to, because it was completely withdrawn, it, the public hearing is also nullified.
Okay.
So if the applicant comes again with another PUD at a later date, we will republish another public hearing.
Okay, so we're okay not doing the public hearing?
Yep, just totally canceled because it was fully withdrawn.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. If the applicant said, for example, oh, I wanna do it next month, then you would still have to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Did it appear that the applicant is uh still determined to move forward on it?
Yeah, based on the withdrawal letter that I, I gave to all of you, they are still committed to doing something on that site. It's just that they're not moving forward with the concept they had presented.
Okay, so the next, the next item is, I wanted to bring back forward the minutes, the approval of last month's minutes. And in addition, that I'd like to have um included in the minutes of to- of tonight's meeting. I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read it. Okay, were there any questions?
So this will be become part of, if, if we approve this, it'll become part of tonight's minutes. It won't be retroactive to, okay?
Because it wasn't set at the last meeting.
Okay.
But I can include it in this one. I, I would like to have a footnote in, in the minutes of the last meeting just to say um reasons for reasons for my vote uh appear in this uh month's meeting, so that there's a cross-reference in the future, if somebody looks, so why did he vote that way? And you know, you'll see, well, you have to look at the next month's meeting.
So we would add that to the minutes that, that we're approving for the last meeting?
Right.
And then this would become part of tonight's minutes?
Yeah, you would just accept it.
Okay.
And then it'll appear in the minutes. So with that, is there a motion to uh approve the?
Nani, one moment, I would also like to say that we have Kevin Bennett here today, um if anyone has questions for him about the minutes from the last meeting, since we know.
Yeah, I know, I saw him shaking his hand. Are there any questions that people have on the minutes?
There are no questions. I did receive an email late today from attorney Alan Green, and he indicated that he did not feel that the proposed minutes accurately reflect what happened at the last planning commission meeting. I checked uh the statute, section nine of the Open Meetings Act, which pertains to minutes. All that says is that each body shall keep minutes of each meeting showing the date, time, place, members present, members absent, and any decisions made at a meeting open to the public and the purpose or purposes for which a closed session is held. I wasn't at the last, the last planning commission meeting, but I believe, based on what I know, I did watch it, um that the proposed minutes comply with that, the fee requirements.
We go into much more detail than is required under the law. Um we always do as a practice, but it's not required. Who's it, who's Green, whose attorney is he?
I believe he is the attorney for the owners of the property where the Myers was proposed to be located.
Okay.
Radico? The developer?
No, that was-
Those are the owners of the property, I believe. All right.
Yeah, that was another, I think his name was Daniel or something, they're attorneys.
Yeah, so this is procedurally correct, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And so since we're on that topic, I do, and you're here, I wanna confirm an understanding, so because this has come up in the past, we're never quite sure what to do. So when someone makes a, a, a motion, especially if it's a motion to the Board of Trustees for, like we did tonight, recommendation, sometimes they say, well, what's the thinking, why did the commission decide that way? And it wasn't, maybe it was mentioned in the uh findings of fact, that when we represent that and somebody didn't for, you know, forgot to do it or didn't put it in. When those minutes come back to us to be approved, can that additional wording or clarification appear in those minutes, or how should that be appropriately handled?
Okay, that's in the statute also. It states that the public body, which in this case is the planning commission, shall make any corrections in the minutes at the next meeting after the meeting to which the minutes refer.
Corrections too.
So I, just to understand your question, are you saying if the commission fails to specify findings of fact at a meeting, can they then specify those findings of fact at the next meeting?
Well, that's, that, that's another possibility, that isn't quite what I asked, but I'm kinda getting to that point.
Sure, so that would not be appropriate since it didn't actually occur at the original meeting. So if you fail to specify the finding of facts at your original- meeting. So if you fail to specify the finding of facts at your original meeting, that failure persists.
So, and you agree with that?
I do.
Okay, so then if someone said, "Well, I could have more eloquently said something," you know, "that supported," or whatever the decision was, that can be put in the minutes?
That can be put.
It can be. Go ahead.
That can be an addendum to the next meeting's record. So like you've done today.
Like what we did tonight?
Yeah, you have presented a letter that will become an addendum to the minutes for tonight's meeting, July 19. But it cannot be retroactively added into the last minutes because it did not actually occur at that meeting. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So it will never formally become a piece of fact or a finding of fact, but it's a formal record.
It's a comment you made in the subsequent meeting, is what it is.
Yep. And I have other communities that have failed to do findings of fact before, and then at the next meeting saying, "Oh, we want to, you know, put in a findings of fact because we know we're supposed to have one." It's too late.
Yeah, the parties aren't there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
You know, it's not fair.
Yeah, it's a common problem. And most places are getting better over time as they study the Open Meetings Act more.
Are there specific things that the commission should be sure is in their findings of fact, a certain format, or?
Yes. In the case of a special, a special use, which was what I understand the last meeting was about, the planning commission should include the criteria that it considered, which I believe is set forth in section 2.1.7, and findings of fact with respect to each substantive criteria.
I can give an example of that as well. So for example, let's say you are setting forth to approve a special land use. You would say, you know, "We hereby approve this special land use on the finding of fact that criterias 1 through 9 are all satisfied and meet the requirements of the ordinance as presented through this application." If you were to deny special land use, your motion might be, "I move to deny this special land use based on the finding of fact that criterias 1 through 8 are satisfied, but criteria 9 is not satisfied because there are not adequate utilities at this site." So you would specify which criteria fails, and also the reason why you believe that criteria was not met.
You did that.
Yeah.
Your motion contains specific, the two items in the criteria for the special land use.
And similarly, if you put conditions on someone's permit, so like a condition to add a sidewalk, you could say, "With the following condition, finding that this condition is necessary to meet the criteria of number eight," or something like that. So that you're specifically referencing the code section as well for any condition or decision. But you guys are pretty good. You generally do a good job of specifying your findings of fact, I will say. So, yeah, that's the best practice I can follow.
Yeah, and the key to that is, you know, stick to the criteria.
Well, I was told if there were no issues, whatever the application is, and we have the planner's report, that we could just say, "We approve such and such based on the criteria in the planner's letter of blah, blah, blah."
You can do that as well. You would just say, "Based on the finding of fact, that the planner's report accurately reflects the criteria."
Just incorporating by reference the planner's report?
Yep, that's fine as well.
Yeah.
The most important thing is that there's just something. It's not just, "We approve it, done."
Any other questions on minutes?
Or approving and denial, right?
Yes, for any form, whether it's approval, conditional approval, or denial. And findings of fact are required for special land uses and also for redonings and that sort of thing. Plain site plans, they're not required by state law, but for those special, you know, special cases, they are.
Now, sometimes we, in your planner's report, you'll say something about, "This is at the discretion of the planning commission."
Mm-hmm.
So then we have a discussion and decide, you know, what direction we're going to go into.
Yep, that's fine as well.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on minutes, motions, any of that good stuff? If not, do we have a motion to approve the amended minutes of our last meeting?
So by amended, you mean?
That footnote, that, right.
Okay. That would be the only amendment?
That would be the only amendment. And then the statement that I, you know, had printed out for you today, that will appear for next month.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of the June 21, 2023 meeting with an addendum that, a footnote, that a proposed addition to the minutes be... Okay, start over.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes of June 21, 2023 with a footnote.
Stating Commissioner Sobolski's reasons for his vote.
Found in the July 19.
Yeah.
That footnote with the reasons for Chairman Sobolski's vote be included in the minutes of the July 19, 2023 meeting minutes.
Is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Barberina and supported by Commissioner Itzel to approve the amended minutes of June 21. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. That takes care of the minutes. Okay, the monthly planning report. Any questions, or you have any additions or anything to add?
I don't think there's anything in particular to add. All of the changes are highlighted in yellow, as is customary, to draw your attention to any new applications. We received a lot of administrative review applications this month, so one for some banked parking, you know, one for the construction of a truck bay that was previously approved by the ZBA, and one for some additional landscaping for the RV storage place that's right next to us, you know, just under the overpass on Ann Arbor Road. So those are all going through the administrative review process as normal, and we're going to start including those, just so you guys know what else is going on. Things that come through our office that don't necessarily need your approval. Then I should also mention, of course, there is no date right now for the Northville Downs at the Board of Trustees because they're still negotiating the PUD contract and the community benefits agreement. So, no date right now. But yeah, are there any questions about anything in the monthly report?
What about this grant, I believe, that the township received for the sidewalk under the ViDuck?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So the township received over $500,000 of funding to construct the sidewalk that goes underneath the overpass here on Ann Arbor Road to finally connect those two sides of the township. So right now, you actually have to walk two miles, an extra two miles, if you want to get from one side of the road tracks to the other on a safe sidewalk. So it was one of the biggest obstacles in the township, especially for young children and elderly folks that don't want or can't walk very far. So, you know, it's one of our major targets, and to receive full funding for it is fantastic. So that was through the Transportation Alternative Program grant.
Great.
And you're hoping to leverage that with some beautification efforts on part of the railroad?
We would hope so. We'll see.
I have a question. The Phoenix Mill, Five Mile, and that'd be Northville Road, there was some pretty spectacular landscaping plans that were submitted as part of the application. And I can't say exactly what's happened in the back, but in the front, there's still nothing.
Yep. So we're actually doing a landscape inspection tomorrow to see with those plans. So they will soon be getting a full report, and if there's deficient areas, they'll be compelled to fix them. But it's a great thing to bring up. Good timing.
Has the landscaping plan been approved yet from where the Buddies Pizza is located?
Where the Buddies?
On Beck Road?
On Beck Road.
Oh, I personally don't know. I apologize. Laura handles most of the landscape inspections, so.
Yeah, I raised that a few times, maybe a year ago now, but maybe shorter, because, you know, they planted these arborvitae's that scream between them and the Home Depot, and they didn't look good from the very beginning, and they're looking worse now. So maybe you might want to mention that to her?
Sure, yeah, I can mention that to her. And if they have died over the course of the last year, they might still be within their time period to be.
They, yeah, either have died, or they've sort of, I wouldn't say blown over, but...
Okay. Check arborvitae.
Or half-dead.
Okay, sure.
Speaking of that same site, we approved a sign, the sign to go in front of that, the Buddies and the other two, the other three businesses. It was either in the planning commission or the ZBA, I don't remember which. But I don't believe that sign has been updated to reflect what we approved. So if you're going to go out there and do a site inspection, you might want to look at this sign as well.
Okay.
This is a sign that would be along Beck Road.
The monument sign.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Got it.
And what about the, we're done with the monthly planning report. What about the community parks and recreation?
Yes. So the Parks and Recreation Plan is in the public engagement phase right now. Right now, we have received 336 surveys of this morning, which is fantastic. Yesterday, we had our open house, which did have lower attendance than we had hoped for, but we also know that the township chose to have it indoors rather than in a park. So of course, we're not capturing all those park users. So for anyone that has not been familiar with this plan, it is a joint recreation plan between us and the city of Plymouth. So the city is working on inventorying all of their city parks and surveying their city residents, while we work on inventorying the township's parks and reaching out to the township's residents. Once all that has been done, we combine them both into one Parks and Recreation Plan and submit that to the state of Michigan. So this Parks and Recreation Plan follows a very structured format, because the state of Michigan requires that we have certain pieces in there in order to get grant funding. But also on top of that, it has, you know, quantitative analyses of what we're going to see in our parks in the future, what types of demand we expect for different amenities, those sorts of things. So, for example, the state of Michigan requires that we compare the number of ice rigs we have to the national standard. You know, we know we're deficient in ice rigs, but knowing our community, we might not necessarily spend all of our money to build more ice rigs, right? So it involves those analysis pieces that the state requires and the quantitative pieces based on our public feedback and knowledge of the community, together into our Parks and Recreation Plan. And it doesn't obligate funding at all, it just gives us targets for what we can improve over the next five years. So, you know, it gives us easy places to spend money if we get it. So for example, how can we make this park more accessible? Maybe it's replacing the mulch with one of those plastic mats, so it's more accessible for kids in wheelchairs, those kinds of things. So it gives us direction, right, so that when we receive money, we're not like, "Oh, my gosh, where do we spend this?"
So I came to the, I came to the open house last night, at least part of it. I was sitting in the back. I don't know if you saw me. And it was a really good presentation that Laura gave, and it was, and I think it really encouraged people to fill out the survey and participate. I participated five years ago in the one, the last one that we did, just as a resident, but it's good. You guys did a good job, so thank you for that. It was a very clear, very clear presentation.
And you're right, it is a non-
Sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
It's okay, you're fine.
That's okay. He asked if it was a scientific survey. No, it is not a scientific survey. It's more of like a general feeler survey, and that's because to get a statistically valid survey for a community of our size, it would be well over $15,000. So at this time, the board elected not to spend that on a statistically valid survey. And really, you know, even if a survey isn't statistically valid, it doesn't mean it's useless. So it still gives us an idea of what certain sects of the community want. So for example, if we find that a majority of the survey respondents are between 45 and 65, even though it's not representative of the community, it does tell us at least what that segment of the township is looking for in the future. It can also be a great place to source ideas. So there's like free-form questions in the survey for, "What do you want to see in this park?" And, you know, there's a limited number of ideas that any one person can have. But by sourcing all those ideas from the entire community, you come up with brilliant things that you may not have thought of. So someone's like, "I want to, you know, put a dog park in a median that no one uses in a boulevard." You might be like, "Wow, who would have thought of that?" You know what I mean? So that's part of what the survey does as well.
So we talked earlier about that half million dollars for the walkways?
Mm-hmm.
Who do we have to thank for that? Who was the grant writer on that, from our side?
The state of Michigan through the Transportation Alternatives Program, and technically the federal government.
But from our side, someone was writing it.
Oh, Spalding Decker.
Who's that?
Spalding Decker wrote that application.
Oh, very good.
So you can thank them.
Speaking of parks and so forth, on the racetrack proposal, when that was still the eight lots that were going to be developed for technology, was the developer going to pay to put in that walkway that goes around the perimeter of the park? Or was that something that was a new action combined with the racetrack proposal?
Yes, great question. So the walkway has always been planned. Even when it was an industrial site, the developer had committed to installing that walkway and dedicating an easement around the Johnson Creek drain. So because that easement about Johnson Creek has already been dedicated to the township, we consider that, you know, township property, and it's included in the plan. But because, you know, just like a school property, all discussions about recreation on the interior of the Downs site are not final yet, they're not included in the plan because we don't have control over that segment. But we do have a control over the Johnson Creek drain, so.
But I'm just trying to thank you for that. Just to be clear, that would have been developed under the old proposal as well, and the township would not have paid for it, is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, good, thank you.
The walking path has always been planned.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Just a general question. Where is the Northville lumber going to go? Is it on the northeast side or northwest side of Five and Ridge Road? Would you happen to know?
Northwest.
Bob knows.
Almost to Napier. To Napier, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's the west, it's the western.
A mile maybe west of Ridge Road?
Yeah, it's, I think it's the last, furthest parcel left to the west in the MITC corridor, if I remember right.
And that's on the Northville side.
On the Northville side.
Relating to that, I would just make a comment that when we speak to the community about these proposals, somehow the amount of land with the racetrack in the warehouse that goes at the southeast corner of Five Mile and Napier, the racetrack proposal, according to Laura's report back in February, would retain 41% of that land as natural woodland and wetlands. Somehow that's been lost in the discussion. As far as that warehouse, and I'm dealing from memory here, but I think it's just over 60% of that parcel of land will remain in its natural state, again, due to wetlands and so forth, which means that, you know, on both sides of the Johnson Creek drain, we're going to have a really nice area that will remain in its natural state. And somehow, in the discussion of these proposals, that piece of information has been lost. And it's something I think we should convey at every opportunity, so the community really understands what the whole story is on these various developments.
Good point. Is that something you agree with, Mary Ann?
Yes.
Oh, hi.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, anything else on that? Can we move on to the U of M presentations?
Yes, absolutely. So there's no U of M students here to present today. I'm presenting about the U of M projects.
Okay.
But this past semester, we had the privilege of partnering with the University of Michigan Planning College to have two student teams work for us in the township. So their work was completely pro bono. Each team was composed of five students. I should mention, my time was dedicated as well, so, oops, sorry. This is completely free to the township. No cost to the taxpayers. And these student teams work with real client communities, so in exchange for their real-life experience and something to go in their portfolio, they create free work for communities all around Michigan. So we were really lucky to get two of them this year, and I just wanted to pass out what they created for you all. So I'm going to pass these down. So one of these is an Aging in Place report, and the other one is a Public Participation Plan. As a part of both of these, the students launched a voluntary survey together that had questions about aging in place and questions about public participation to the overall public, which got about 250 responses. You know, given that it was just a semester-long project and they didn't have control over how it was sent out, we consider that a pretty good amount of feedback for a student project. So the Public Participation Plan is an analysis of how we're engaging the public today and how we can do better in the future. That means outreach for meetings like this, but also outreach for larger projects, whether that's our tree planting program, or our Parks and Recreation Plan, our master plans, all of those components. And, you know, this is not compelling us to do any particular actions, but it is to guide us, right? So what would be the best bang for our buck to reach more members of the township, and reach members in the township that might not be coming to our meetings or might not be participating at this time, because we know there is a particular demographic that comes out to most of our meetings. So this is an analysis of that and recommendations for how we can do better. And then the Aging in Place Plan is an analysis of the types of amenities that exist today to support aging in place in Plymouth Township. So that means if you arrive in Plymouth Township as a toddler and you want to age here for the rest of your life, are you supported by the amenities around you? That includes transportation, housing, senior services, all sorts of amenities, healthcare, you know, can you get to a grocery store, that sort of stuff. So they analyzed our amenities in our system today, and then they make some recommendations about how we can improve- And then they make some recommendations about how we can improve our policies and our zoning ordinance and our programs to be more age-friendly. And that could be simple things like, you know, making sure we allow ramps as accessory structures to back entrances of homes. But it can also be larger things like recommending which parcels might be suitable for senior-friendly development. So, their plan, again, is a report on how we're doing today and how we can do better in the future. And then we've also included here a stapled summary of all of the survey responses. So, you guys can see the breakdown for each individual question and also the free form answer portions.
Is this material still available on wa, online?
Yes, it's all available on the website. So, we have a section under Community Development that is called Other Plans and Studies. Or no, it's called Plans, Reports, and Studies. And this page has both of these, the survey responses and the I-275 Trail Assessment. So, you don't have to look through the whole thing today.
Okay.
But I just really encourage you all to look at the work they've done because I'm really proud of them. I had a wonderful time working with them. You know, they really enjoyed being able to come to the township and meet the staff and actually get to be a part of a community. For a lot of them, this is their first exposure to the government. So, it was pretty exciting for them. And, yeah, I had a great time.
I thought it was interesting when you read this, you have the auxiliary unit dwellings, you know, where you convert garages. Excuse me, and it's, reminds me of what was popular right as the depression started where people couldn't afford homes. And so, they built a garage and that became their home until they hoped when the depression ended, they would have enough resources to actually build a house, usually in the front, and convert the garage back to its intended use.
Yeah, that was one of the-
So, what goes around, sort of comes around.
Yeah, things get pop, kit homes are popular again, too. Prefab homes. But yeah, so that one of their recommendations was to amend our zoning ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units for family members. So that you could have a granny flat if your mom wants to move into you as she ages or something like that. So, that was one of their many recommendations. But ultimately, we're thinking about either appending the plan or at least the survey results to the master plan when it's adopted so that we have that data kind of in there. Are you laughing at Gil?
So, you were saying that this comes at no expense to-
Yep.
-taxpayers. It looks like it's a really well-done desktop publishing type, who paid for that?
So, they did. So, those students created that with their own desktop software and that was bound by McKenna for you folks, for free.
Just pop out.
But yeah, they, they, each group had someone who was really into like document design and they got to lead how their document was designed. So, we gave them the township logo and our color scheme. Obviously, one team chose to use that and one team did not. But that's okay.
I've, I've been through this study in detail. I, I recommend that all of us really read it closely. It makes quite a number of recommendations. I believe that we should discuss some of those recommendations because they depart from the, kind of the current understanding to think of what the township includes. I don't want to, you know, get into the details now because I don't think it's fair. But I do think that it warrants a follow-up discussion on our part about some of the specific recommendations. So, just for, that, that's my view of the subject. It is obviously, they put a great deal of effort into this. But I do think the recommendation, some of the recommendations need to be looked at more closely, particularly if this were to be used as an adjunct to the 2025 Master Plan update.
And even if you choose not to include the full plans, you could also consider just including the raw data.
Yeah.
Whatever you feel would be most appropriate.
Yeah, the raw data is very, very well done.
Yeah, and you're by no means committed to follow the steps in these plans? It's really just like a fact-finding exercise for the township to improve.
Yeah, and if I make a suggestion, if you know in advance, I would think maybe a month in advance, that it's going to be a shortened meeting, you know, maybe just a few sign approvals or whatever, that sometime be carved out where we can have that type of discussion and let us know so, you know, the rest of the commission can study it and kind of collect their thoughts. So, we can have a good discussion on that.
Yeah, we can absolutely do that at one of our later meetings.
Right.
That sounds like a great plan.
Yeah, it looks like you've put some effort into it, Commissioner Boyd, and I'd love to hear what your ideas are.
I'd be happy to do that, but only after everybody else-
We're having our discussion right now.
Yeah, but only after everybody else has had a chance to review it and form your own views. Because I think the best discussion would be if we all come in with our own perspectives and see how, how, how they're aligned and how they're not aligned.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
We never did, we never did figure out whether somebody can actually withdraw their application when, when it's in flying.
Yeah, that's a good point, Bob. I was wondering that same thing.
That comes up again, we need to be prepared for what we would do.
Kevin, can we, can we, should we be looking at our bylaws?
Yes.
And try to address some of these areas that remain silent?
Well, let's just, let's get that question answered.
Yeah. Instead of going down the rabbit hole.
Several others, too.
Yeah.
He mentioned he has an answer for us.
Today.
Okay, sure. Thanks for bringing it up, Bob, because I was wondering the same thing.
Okay, the question that I looked at, first part is whether an applicant may withdraw, sorry.
The question I've looked at is whether an applicant may withdraw his, its application for a special use at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission bylaws are silent on this issue. Article, pardon me, section 2.7 of the Zoning Ordinance pertains to special uses and is silent on this issue. Article 5 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCL 125.3101 et cetera, specifically, MCL 125.3502, contains procedures regarding special use applications. This statute is also silent on this issue. Case law on this is scant. In a 1991 decision decided 15 years before the enactment of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, a panel of the Court of Appeals noted that in an application for a rezoning, the application, or the applicant withdrew his application after the Director of Development recommended it to the Planning Commission to deny the application. The applicant then resubmitted another revised application for rezoning, which the Director recommended for approval. This case is Albright versus City of Portage, 188 Mishap, 342, 470 Northwest Second, 657. Please note that this was not a ruling by the Court of Appeals, rather, it was a description of the proceedings leading up to the appeal. Similarly, there was a 2009 decision unpublished by the Michigan Court of Appeals that involved an inverse condemnation, inverse condemnation claim. The issue was not ripe because the plaintiff withdrew its application for a special use permit before the Township Board ruled on the application. That case is Timeout LLC versus New Buffalo Township, docket number 278916. Again, please note that this was not a ruling on the issue being discussed, but a description of the proceedings leading up to the appeal. The fact that neither, the parties in neither case argued, nor did the Court of Appeals panels mention that an applicant for a special use approval may not withdraw its application appears to indicate that such a withdrawal is acceptable. Further, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which is not with the state of Michigan, it is a public-private partnership and an economic development corporation, has published a guide to development, an overview for the development review process in a given municipality. Page 5 of the guide presents a flow chart. The flow chart shows that if a special land use is not recommended by the Planning Commission, the applicant's options are to appeal the decision to the city council, which is not the case in Plymouth Township's zoning ordinance, to revise and resubmit or to withdraw the application. In light of the above, it appears that the answer to that question is whether an applicant may withdraw his application for a special land use at the Planning Commission meeting is yes. If that is the case, the Planning Commission should not have voted on the application. The second question was whether the applicant, once he withdraws his application, must wait a year to resubmit another application for special land use. This question is considerably simpler. Nothing in the zoning ordinance or the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act provides for such. Contrarily, if the Zoning Board of Appeals denies a request for a variance or a rezoning application is denied, the applicant must wait for a new, new appeal period of 365 days, subject to limited exceptions such as a material change in circumstances. However, this one-year period is limited to ZBA's consideration of applications for variances and for rezonings, either denied, denied by the Township Board. Does that answer the question? It was a, it was a tough question.
It is a tough question, yeah.
So, in this particular case, is the applicant, does he have to wait 365 days or can he-
No.
Come, he does not have to wait?
No, that, that rule applies only for applicants for variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals and for applicants for rezoning.
So, even though we denied his request to withdraw the application, that didn't, he can come back and apply again before a year?
Yes.
So, there was no-
Letting him down?
So, even though we didn't allow him, the, the developer, to withdraw the application at the meeting, they can come back with a new application before 365 days? So, so in effect, they don't have any damages?
Well, I'm not going to say that.
Well.
I'm going to say the rule is that they, there is no requirement that they wait for 365 days.
You're speaking for a special land use in this case?
Yes.
Okay.
So, that was not, that was not correct, then? I'm going to say it was, in an ideal world, it was not correct. This is an extremely complicated issue. It probably is one of first impression. It's been discussed in two Court of Appeals cases that I could locate. But it was only mentioned in factual background. It was not an actual ruling by the Court of Appeals. Yeah, I got it. Sometimes they call that dicta.
Is, is there any requirement that if he comes back before 365 days, that the proposal be materially different than the original proposal?
No.
Okay.
So, you can just keep reapplying? Conceivably or theoretically, yes. And see how, who you can lobby into- I'm not going to comment on that. I can say it, you can't. I can't say it, I'm not going to.
Thank you, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Yeah, very helpful.
Can I ask a question? If a meeting is disruptive in that we cannot continue our business, like in our, we've had a meeting where we've had to postpone just a couple of, like, discussing our monthly meeting or something. But if a meeting gets disruptive and we can't have discussions, can we, can we adjourn the meeting? Can we postpone the additional applications for that evening? Like, what can we do?
The remedy for persons being disruptive at public meetings is to remove the person from the meeting. However, you can only remove the person from the meeting in which he is disruptive. You cannot preclude them from reappearing at future meetings.
Or even at the same meeting?
No.
If they just-
If they're disruptive at the meeting at issue, they can be removed. I guess the, I mean, the, the more difficult question is, you know, people are hooting and hollering and making comments when you're trying to get your business done. At what point, what, is, that's your question, what's your-
What can we do?
I mean, you know-
Like, we've had some meetings now where it's very difficult to have a discussion.
Yeah.
And for us to really do our job, we can't hear each other and we're interrupted.
Yeah, and perhaps we're intimidated to express what our views are.
Um, can we halt the meeting and continue it to a next meeting? Or do we need to, like, talk louder or?
The open meeting, the only provision in the Open Meetings Act with respect to disruptive persons is that they can be, well, first of all, what, what the Open Meetings Act states is that a public body may establish reasonable rules and regulations in order to minimize the possibility of disrupting the meeting. And the Planning Commission does have bylaws. I didn't see anything in there with respect to disruptive people. But it is in the Open Meetings Act that a person can be removed from the meeting, from that meeting, if they are disruptive.
May I interject briefly here? So, one of the provisions in the bylaws is after a certain amount of time, I think it's 10:00 PM, the commission can adjourn all further business because they've been in the meeting so long. So, that is something you're allowed to do. But you cannot necessarily postpone a public hearing to a later date, which is part of why we put them at the beginning of the meeting because we've noticed them for that date and we want to make sure that everyone is there. You can, I believe, postpone a public hearing at the ZBA within the next day. So, if something happens where someone's sick, they don't show up, you could say, okay, everyone in the audience, that's going to be tomorrow, same time, same place. But there are restrictions on public hearings specifically that you can't just adjourn a meeting and not hold the public hearing that you promised to hold. You have to make some indication of either when it's going to be rescheduled to or actually hold it. But Kevin, I think what they're asking is if they get to, say, for example, the miscellaneous business part of the agenda and it's just too disruptive, if they just adjourn out of the blue, is that a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
I don't think it is.
Okay.
Say that again.
Sure, so, let's say you've, you've gotten through the public hearings, you're into some other form of business. If you are experiencing-
Excuse me, so the public hearing is done, right?
Public hearings are done.
Okay.
And you're on to some other later item of business in the agenda. If it's just incredibly disruptive, people are throwing things or something like that, and you just need to adjourn the meeting, that is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act because you've held the items you're required to hold.
Okay, so also if there is another agenda item, like, like a sign or something that we still have to do, we can still-
You could defer it to next meeting.
If we can't, like, have a proper discussion and give it our proper attention.
Mm-hmm, yep, you can table it or defer it.
Anything but a public hearing is what you're saying.
Yeah, the public hearings are the most important part because those are protected under state law with certain specifications.
And you cannot post, so you cannot start a public hearing and then postpone it until the next meeting? I mean, you, you've started the public hearing, so you've already heard comments.
Yeah, you should close it.
But for whatever reason, the, you know, whatever board, you know, they say, well, postpone it, have further discussion at the next meeting. Is that permissible?
I would agree with Nani that that is not permissible because those public hearings are specifically noticed. However, if it's not a public hearing, the law does not require a public body to produce an agenda of a, of a regularly scheduled meeting. The law does require the public body to produce the agenda of a special meeting, but not a regular meeting. So, you do not have to follow through on the agenda except with respect to the public hearings.
And as was done earlier this year, you could close the public hearing and then defer your decision on the item at hand to a later date. But the hearing must be held. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, what if a public hearing goes on longer than we open it at, say, 7:10?
Well, you can limit it, right?
Yeah, so your, your bylaws limit the amount of time that the commission will operate, so like a three-hour period. But my recommendation would be even if the public hearing is going over 10:00 PM, you would interject, say that you're extending the meeting by one hour and allow the public hearing to conclude. That would be the most defensible option.
Well, you, but you could also, when you open the meeting, say, you know, we're only going to take public comments for an hour, right?
Well, couldn't you just say, could you do, I don't think so, because everybody has to have a chance to comment.
Yeah, but what if it's six hours?
I, I think you could limit it by saying people can't come back up for a second turn.
Well, I thought, so in our bylaws, we say 10 o'clock is, you know, we have to vote if we're going to continue a meeting, whether it's a public hearing or not. So, if we say, as Nanny said, if we reach 10 o'clock, there's still people talking, we could vote to say, okay, we'll extend it one hour, that puts it to 11, and that's the end.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but my recommendation would definitely not just be cut everyone off at 10 because you do still need to properly close the hearing and resolve that item.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of pretty extreme and draconian and, you know, it's, I think it's the, you know, come back up for another bite of the apple that tends to, tends to be a little bit-
Generally, people don't say anything. Generally, people don't say anything new.
No.
So the trustees don't have that additional three minutes, do they?
No.
So maybe we should just not permit that three minutes. It's three minutes and that's flat.
For a public hearing, you could cap each speaker at three minutes, sure.
Yeah, I've always taken the stance that, you know, people are up, they get nervous, you know, some raise some good points, they need more than three minutes. But you don't want to, you know, give someone three and somebody else fifteen.
And then we've also had public hearings where, I mean, it's very productive to keep hearing back from other, like, neighbors or adjacent neighbors that are responding to something that was said.
I think public hearings are really important, and I, I think we should do everything reasonable to give the public a chance to speak to us. And so the idea of giving somebody an extra three minutes at the end of the process, I think is something that's a good idea, unless it really gets to be abused.
I agree, as long as we can still conduct our business.
I think it's been being abused.
I would like to interject. So typically, a commission will hold the public hearing, have everyone speak for those three minutes, and if there's somebody that had a particular point that you think would be worth deliberating on, you would close the public hearing, open the commission discussion portion, and invite that person up to speak more. So the commission can ask audience members with items that they're particularly interested to come and, you know, give some more illumination on what they're speaking about. But part of the reason for the three minutes is not just your time, it's also neighbors not encroaching on each other's time, right? Because everyone is supposed to have an equal amount to speak. So if one person is dominating for twenty minutes, they're infringing upon the rights of the other audience members, not just your time, but the other people that are here to speak and waiting. So that's part of why the time limit exists.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, the problem, and I agree, I mean, with public hearing, it's important, that's we always did that additional three minutes. But when it gets to the point when there is no value added, there's so much repetition, then it turns to personal attacks. There has to be a limit.
I agree, and I actually, in watching how you handle public hearings in the past, you've been really good about reminding the audience that if somebody has some point that hasn't been made yet, we want to hear that. But, you know, it's not all that helpful to have the same points be made over and over again. So you're kind of coaching the audience to edit their comments appropriately, and I think that's worked generally pretty well.
For the most part, there's...
For the most part, yeah.
Yeah, the part that I don't get is somebody comes up to the podium and says you're a jerk, and then wonders why you don't want to hear what they have to say.
So another...
That's kind of part of public service, isn't it?
I know, but...
Or maybe you are a jerk.
Well, I am.
Aren't you used to it, though? How long you been doing this?
And Commissioner Barberina had another question, just about how to control a meeting of that manner. So I, before being a planner, was a public participation official and have facilitated a lot of contentious meetings in my day. So if you want to move forward with establishing facilitation guidelines and rules and announcing those at the beginnings of meeting and having the planner help be a facilitator for those really intense meetings, that is something we can do. That's an experience that I have and can help talk to you guys more about how to control meetings like that.
That would be helpful for the Board of Trustees as well.
Yeah, I think the Board also needs to practice not responding to people during the public hearing.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's so difficult. Because, you know, like you said, Tim, I mean, I value what people have to say. I'm very interested in what people have to say, but it gets couched around, you know, insults and, and it's, and, you know, public outbursts, you know, and it just, it diminishes the value of what they have to say. And I don't know how to, I don't know how to get past it.
I don't think you can get past it. It's difficult when people are, you know, have one mindset. And I think there were a lot of other unforeseen things happening in the background that you just cannot control. Okay, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn at 9:34?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn at 9:34.
Second. Move by Commissioner Barberina, supported by Commissioner Boyd, to adjourn our meeting at 9:34. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.